Ladies and gentlemen, ready? Okay. Let's go to the board. I'd like to call the order of the Board of City Commissioners for August the 18th. Call or roll, please.
Stevens.
Here.
Aggie.
Here.
Haron.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Wintering.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a form.
We do have a form. If you're able to stand, I've asked Reverend Kerbo to lead us in our prayer and then we'll do the flag salute.
Dear Lord, it is an honor to call upon your name because you have put us here on this earth. And Lord, that you have put us here that we can work together and we can do things together. And Lord, that we can make this a better place. And Lord, we realize that we have gathered here this evening, dear Lord, to discuss things and dear Lord, to move forward. And dear Lord, we can't look back, but we must go forward. And we ask you that you would lay your hand upon all of our leadership and dear Lord, all of us that is in this community, that we will be doing everything we can to support. I pray that your blessings now will be upon each one and God, that your mighty hand will rest upon us, that we will be doing the things the way you would have us to do them. And dear Lord, that you would give us all the strength and the help that we need and that Shawnee will become a great city with great health. And dear Lord, we just pray that your blessings would be upon all of our communities. In Jesus' name, amen.
Would you lead us in the flag salute?
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to say welcome to each and every one of you. Glad you're here this evening. And our first item is consider approval of our agenda. Chair will entertain a motion in that matter.
So moved.
The motion by Commissioner Hall.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Haron. Item number two is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Vice Mayor Haron, my motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. She beat you.
She beat me.
Commissioner Aggie, ladies first. Okay. Item number three is commissioners' comments. Not hearing any, then I'll move on.
Real quick, real quick. Let's just remind everybody, school started. Slow down. Drive slowly, please. Something's gonna happen and... I live on Union Street and of course, it's the fastest street in Shawnee and well, Rogers School is down there. Not to say that that's the most important school, but people just slow down.
Well, the middle school though, I think, too.
Good, good advice. We sure need to keep, be aware of that. We sometimes forget that and I just, we gotta be careful.
Kids have to walk in the street because there's not always sidewalks.
Yes.
Hopefully, this commission will fix that more and more. We've got a big plan going on that and that's a wonderful thing. Any other comments? Well, at this time, then we'll move on to citizens' participation. And we do encourage citizens, if they want to share something with us, please come forward. Have a three-minute limit per person and a 12-minute limit per topic. So is there anyone here that'd like to share something with us? No one coming forward, then we'll move on to item number five, which is the mayor's presentation of the beautification committee. Mr. Cash, I think y'all need to come up here and y'all are ahead of this beauty patch.
We're not sure who show up.
Okay. If they're not, I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead with you. Our first award is to Allen Newwella, First 124 North Harrison. And I will tell you this, are you here? They're not here, but I will tell you this much. It's about the, and I might be wrong on this, when you go out down Main Street and turn to the north, it's about the third house on the left on the west side. It's a beautiful little white house. It's a nice picture here. And it's a real neat-looking little house. I will tell you, I sent the commissioners a letter. I've been stopping when I see a nice house and their yard looking so nice. And if somebody's in the yard, tell me how great it looks. They'll tell anybody after a second how great it looks. And I have been by this house numerous times waiting to see somebody in that front yard because they've just done a great job. So you will see to it that they will get that, okay? The next one is goes to the Cracker Barrel Restaurant, an old country store. Their landscaping is just beautiful there. We have a great award for them. Our church award goes to Benedict Catholic Church. Wow, that'd be carried by there. They sure got their place looking nice, too. And our last one goes to the business award, goes to La Quinta Hotel. Their flowers and landscape here is just beautiful out there. And you're here, come up here. That is just great. And you're with La Quinta?
Uh-huh.
And your name?
Christine.
Christine, I want to shake your hand and say what a wonderful thing that is to keep our city beautiful.
Thank you.
Okay? Again, thank you so much. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Item number six is a public hearing and consideration of an ordinance for a conditional use permit on property zone R1, single-family residential located at 2102 East Main Street, case number PTN-14. Applicant is absentee Shawnee Housing Authority. We'll take a staff report in this matter, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission members, you're calling a line on your digital packet. This begins on about page 37. The request before you from this absentee Shawnee Housing Authority is to turn an existing single-family residence at 2102 East Main Street into a community center, which would be utilized for limited tribal activities for both administrative functions and then also for, potentially for use by residents when their adjacent property is developed. This residential property is 1.36 acres in size and immediately to the north and the west is property owned by absentee Shawnee. And this property was approved for a single-family residential subdivision in 2012, which would create 26 residential lots. It has not been developed at this time, but it is my understanding that the absentee housing authority doesn't intend to continue to work to fully develop that adjacent property. This matter was heard before the planning commission on August 6th and was unanimously recommended approval. Staff finds that the proposed community center will occupy existing single-family residents and that the overall use of the property will be limited in intensity and that the character of the residents and the residential neighborhood will not be affected. And so with that, staff concurs with the planning commission, recommends approval of a conditional use permit, subject to one condition, which is that the parking standards listed in section 22, 185.11, apply. And what those parking standards say is that if you have a parking lot, that it has to be screened through fencing and through vegetation, et cetera, so that the adjacent properties next to this future community center will be protected and not have any harm done when a parking lot is constructed. I'd be happy answering questions that you have.
Is this property going into trust?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
So it won't? Okay. So taxes will be paid on it? Property taxes will be paid on it? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Not hearing anymore. Okay. At this time, I will open our public hearing and I'll take any remarks in this matter. People speak for this or against it, feel free to come forward. No one coming for or against it? I will close our public hearing then. And we do have a staff recommendation in this matter already, so Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as with the condition as outlined by our staff.
Okay. Have a motion? Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Stevens.
I'll make sure that one condition about the parking lots on there, I didn't say it on my packet anywhere.
We'll make sure that's applied. Okay. Okay. Okay, then we move on. Motion carries. Item number seven, consideration of approval of final plat for Shawnee Marketplace, PUD for property located I-40 and Kickapoo Street, including acceptance of public dedications and a letter of credit in lieu of a completion of public improvements, authorizing obtaining of signatures and recording of the final plat. Do we have a staff report in this matter, sir?
Thank you. Of course, I know all of you are very familiar with this property and with the large commercial development that's planned and the site work that's currently underway. The applicant did submit a request for final plat approval and provided us with the necessary engineering documentations. Staff has reviewed and has approved, subject to conditions, those plans that have been submitted. And this was also heard by the planning commission on August 6th and unanimously recommended for approval. The applicant has also concurrently with the request for final plat approval would also like to file the final plat so that individual lots can be sold to those entities that wish to own the property, for instance, those frontage lots along Kickapoo Street. And what that request requires is that public improvements be bonded for. And so typically, we would have a final plat before you that would come for approval. You would approve it, but the plat would not be recorded until public roads, public sewer, et cetera, were installed and approved by the city. And so in this case, there is a process that's allowed in city code that allows for someone to kind of jumpstart that process, but it just requires that a bond be submitted so that if there is any deficiency, then the city has that financial backing to be able to make those improvements and protect the public investment and protect the investments of anyone that purchased property. And that aspect is still ongoing. There's been discussions late afternoon today between the city attorney and developer's attorney. And so we're nearly there on getting that necessary paperwork. So what staff would ask for tonight is that you approve the final plat with the conditions listed, that you authorize the mayor to sign the plat upon receipt and approval of the necessary...
Paperwork.
Paperwork, as approved by the city attorney.
And you're good with that, Mary Ann?
Yes, that way we don't hold them up.
Yeah.
And you know, I feel real strong about getting hobby log ins, so I wouldn't want to hold them up.
There's nine conditions on that approval.
Yes, sir. There's nine conditions.
Any other questions of the staff? Okay. Any other further discussion, ladies and gentlemen? Okay.
Are they gonna try to sell these lots as those along Kickapoo there?
That's my understanding.
I believe we approve the plat, final plat, with nine conditions.
Second. Second by Commissioner Smith. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Haron made a motion. Motion carries. Item number eight, this presentation by the city engineer regarding flood on Buck Drive. Took y'all a long time since our last commission to get on this.
Just too... It hasn't rained since then.
What a great job getting on this real quick. Thank you.
This item is a short presentation on the flooding condition of Buck Drive just north of Main Street and east of Harrison. Some citizens came to the city commission last commission meeting and stated the...
Excuse me, John. Will you sure raise that mic because there probably were a lot of people watching this matter and I thank you.
Okay. And I prepared a short PowerPoint describing the flooding condition on Buck Drive just east of Harrison and north of Main Street. It's an L-shaped road that curves around from Kickapoo to, or from Harrison to Main Street. This picture here was taken at the intersection of Main Street and Buck Drive looking north. As you can see, the water's gotten out of the channel and into the street and it's really flooded the neighborhood. Next picture is a picture on Buck Drive itself looking east. Again, the surface flow has gotten out of the channel at the box there. Underneath Buck Drive, there's a double structure box, 60 inch by 50 inch, 60 inch wide, 50 inch tall, two cells. And the channel's not, and the box is not able to discharge what is, would be the 100 year storm. Flow's coming down. So first thing to do is to inventory and compile just what our stormwater conveying system is in that area. And we've searched records and our plats and different design plans of different streets down there. And right up in here is the open channel coming down from where the drainage structure is on Buck Drive. And the first thing it does is hits right here, a 48-inch covert pipe.
So it's a creek to that point?
It's a creek to that point.
And then it hits that 48-inch?
Hits that 48-inch pipe. Now, what does it go into 48-inch pipe? There is an overflow section, kind of a grated swell earthen that flows this way into an open structure box here. Now, this 48-inch pipe bends and runs diagonally just where it shows to Main Street to a junction right here where it connects, there's a junction box that ties in the 48-inch pipe in an old brick arch pipe, 72 by 40-inch arch pipe. And then from that point, it continues out of that structure with two 48-inch pipes. And that pipe's continued running diagonally all the way down to another junction box here just immediately east of Harrison where the junction box, uh-oh. Where the junction box connects...
I thought we were underwater there for a minute.
It was getting there. And right here at this junction box, it connects the two 48-inch pipes. And this pipe right here coming down Harrison, right on the east side, is a 60-inch pipe. So this junction box connects two 48 inches and a 60. And now that junction box comes two 72-inch pipes that run all the way to the creek, the open creek there at Millstead Park. Also, this right through here, this is also an arch pipe to that point. Couple of years ago, about 10 years ago, that pipe had caved and the city put in a corrugated metal pipe, an arch pipe the same size. So it continues on to right there to where there's another junction box and the box connects that 60-inch pipe and continues south. Back up here at this overflow section where this comes down this drainage channel here, there's a structure and then a box, concrete box, a 60-inch wide by 30-inch tall box that runs under Main Street to another brick arch pipe that runs back to this junction box where it connects with the two 48 inches and then discharges south. So that's the existing kind of hodgepodge system right there at Main Street, what's going on. And it's been built probably over the last 80 years, kind of just added on. So having identified the existing system, then we looked at, you know, the problem is the channel and the structures aren't able to convey what, you know, the 100-year design storm. And as such, the reason why the floodplain is shown here in gray and it shows it getting out in the neighborhood, you know, in the houses, because the channel can't convey it. Right here is the 100-year old floodplain overlaid just on the corner of Buck Street to give you an idea of which houses are within the existing FEMA-identified floodplain as it sits today. And that's just a bigger view of the, an aerial photo showing where the existing floodplain is. Now, this floodplain here is Zone A. And what Zone A means, it's an undetermined flood elevation, surface water elevations. It hasn't been a complete detailed study done on it. This section over here off Shawnee Creek is Zone X where identified the floodwater surface elevations have been shown in different cross-sections. That's more detail. And we do have a request into FEMA to do the study on this. And they currently doing the, all the tributaries that feed into the North Canadian River from Oklahoma City, east, east of Seminole towards McAllister. And they probably will have that completed maybe within the next year, year and a half for us. But that doesn't really affect what we're doing right now. Whoops. Now, the first thing we needed to do, we know that the structure and the channel is not adequate to convey the 100-year storm, that's why the floodplain shows in width. So the first thing to do is identify how much flow is coming down there during the 100-year storm to do some design basis by. We got on the USGS interactive website, Streamstats website, and we drop a point right there at the outlet at Main Street of this watershed and it identifies and delineates the watershed that drains right to that point. And it goes all the way, whoops. And this page here is just showing some characteristics of the drainage basin, but the main one that I'm concerned with is 365 acres up here. It's a pretty good-sized watershed for an urban area that drains to that point. And then the next thing, the computer model program, and down here is PK 100. That's the 100-year storm, the peak discharge to that blue point there on Main Street. And they calculated 1,310 CFS. And CFS is a cubic foot per second. So 1,310 cubic feet per second would be the design storm. And that's what we would want to look at to size the conveyance system. So we took that information and then quickly went into the Bureau of Roads' nomograph. It's a thing that allows us to quickly identify size of structures for planning purposes. And what this nomograph does, this is for pipe culverts with inlet control. So we come over here to this chart over here and this is headwater depth to diameter. And we always do that with equal one ratio because we're not allowing, you know, the water to get five feet above the 72-inch pipe, which is a six-foot pipe. So the reason why we picked 72-inch pipes to use is because downstream there on Harrison, just south of Main, is two 72-inch pipes already. So we know there's adequate headroom and elevation sets to do it. Now, if we went to the larger pipe, say 120 inches, you know, we may not even be able to lay that in the topography that's there. So we decided on 72 inches. And what we do is come over here and draw a straight line through there. And this tells me here that there's 200 CFS that one 72-inch pipe can discharge.
Here how much?
200 CFS with under inlet control. So we look at the total peak discharge coming to that point, it's 1,310. So we would need, so if you do the division, it comes out to about 6.5, 6.5. But you can't do a half a pipe, so we would say we'd need seven 72-inch pipes. Now, instead of just pipes, we looked at reinforced concrete boxes. And what we did on that, the nomograph on, shows a relationship for discharge of width, like a weir section for concrete structures. And we did the same thing again. We come over here, we say headwater to depth is going to be one because we don't want to pond or flood anything behind the structure. So we call it one. And we came back over here and used the six-foot height, which is 72 inches, because we know that the 72-inch height structure will work even in the downstream direction. So saying that, you come back over here to the pivot point and it shows about 45 CFS that per foot of width that a structure six-foot high could discharge through. So doing the division again on that, we come up with, the box wouldn't have to be 29.11 feet high or wide.
Wide.
Exactly. At six-foot height, then that's kind of, it would be difficult to build something with that big a span. So we look at, we say we're a triple cell, 10 by 6, 10 foot wide by 6 foot high, triple cell box. It's already a standard. We know the design of those because we got standard designs from ODOT. They have that. So that's what we would say. So it would take seven 72-inch pipes for three 10-by-six reinforced concrete boxes to discharge 1,310 CFS without backing up into the neighborhoods. Now, just as a, just as a point here, this is a nomograph and we used it to show, you know, that 48-inch pipes here, the nomograph would be, shows that the 48-inch pipe can only discharge 80 CFS, which is much, 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 much smaller than the 1,310 we would need for the 100-year storm. So...
The existing pipes, how many, how much water does it handle right now?
Well, the 80 CFS can handle it at the opening under inlet control, but from obviously those pictures, it's not under inlet control anymore. It's under pressure flow really because the water surface has gotten up over, above the top of the pipe and it's flooding the neighborhood, so...
How much right-of-way do you even have? Do you have that much right-of-way to put, even if you could do that?
Well, I'm not sure I want to, well, I guess I could since I showed it. But if you go back to the, and Mary Ann might not want me to say this, but this is the actual alignment of those structures, those pipes. This one here.
So I might say this is topped by a...
And it goes, goes under a building.
Yeah.
Obviously, the storm service air before the building. But no, we don't have any eastments.
You don't have any, oh yeah, you don't even have any...
And years ago, things were done, you know, in the 20s on a handshake and not really on some things.
We have them now by prescription.
By prescription. But anyway, we're not talking right-of-way, right? Yeah, we're not.
I know.
To get back to this...
That's like building a, that's prefabricated, but that's like building a bridge that long, isn't it?
Do what?
Almost like building a bridge that long, isn't it?
Yeah. We could, you could, triple cells, I mean, it's 30 foot wide, but it can be done. It's not, it's not difficult. And like I say, we already got the design already up by standard. Of course, we'd have to do a lot of field survey and make it fit, but 10 foot wide is a pretty good, pretty good width for a box, triple box. This slide here was just to let you see that this is the actual plat of the area over there. This is Buck Drive. The plat was done in 1954. If you look closely on the plat, I don't know if you can see it on your drawing, but it shows a drainage ditch here and then it shows the existing 48-inch pipe right there. So I mean, the pipe was there before any development in that subdivision was there. And the next one slide from the Lisa Anne subdivision shows the same thing. This is the existing 48-inch pipe that was there in place. So the... So, the city didn't go out there and put a 48-inch pipe and cause water to back up on these houses or anything. Pipe was there, and then the subdivision was built, so...
Pipe was there first, huh?
Like put in like 1920, James, but you remember that, don't you?
Wait a minute, that's out of order.
From the, next slide was, is the, from, right here is the structure underneath Buck Drive, and I was calling that Point A, and then down here, the outlet at Millstead Creek, or Millstead Park, Shawnee Creek there, the open channel, I call them Point B, and it's about 1,510 feet from Point A to Point B. And that's going to help me do my estimating on costs here. And preliminary cost estimate, just for seven 72-inch pipes is what it would take. Again, total distance is 1,510 feet. Estimated for five 72-inch pipes at 1,510 feet at $309, and then two pipes for 72-inch at 778 feet. Now, y'all might say, why, why the difference in things here? We already have two existing pipes for 732 feet there, so we don't need to do that again. So, I came up with a cost estimate of $2.8 million, but again, there's a lot of contingencies thrown in, because it's just quick and easy-to-get estimate for planning purposes. But throw in a 25% contingency factor, because we'd have to be, you know, relocating utilities, there's utility cost plus right-of-way, we're having to purchase other lots downstream, you know, south of Main Street to get these things taken in. So, with the contingency, it comes up to about $3.5 million. Now, we went ahead and looked at the cost estimate for doing the three RCBs, which is reinforced concrete boxes. This was a little different. We took from the standard design how much cubic yard per lineal foot is in those structures, and it was a good estimate, it came out to be 3.25 cubic yards per lineal foot, and then the steel is another major item, all the reinforcement that goes into it, comes out to about 312 pounds of steel per lineal foot, so, and we got some cost estimates for Class A concrete from past bids at $518 per cubic yard. Now, that's not just the cost of just ordering the concrete for cubic yard, that's cost of all the concrete that goes in the forming, excavation, the tying, the steel, and so there's a lot of stuff included in, in that estimate, and then the 91 cents per pound. That came out to be for the, the structures themselves, $2.5 million, for the steel reinforcement, $428,000, about $2.9 million total, with 25% contingency, that estimated about $3.7 million to solve that. Now, we looked at, instead of just those two, we looked at maybe a combination of something else. We looked at the, the triple cell boxes underneath the roads, here at Buck Drive, Main Street, streets south of Main, and then from, I can't think of the name of that street, I'm at a blank. Anyway, underneath, from here all the way to Millstead, another triple cell, and in the blue would be an open channel section, instead of a, instead of a concrete box or a pipe, just an open channel section. So, what size open channel section would we think we would need? Well, we, we plugged this in, quick calculator program, and came up with 24-foot wide top, top channel, 24. And I came up with 24 because the, at the Buck Drive plat, it showed a 26-foot drainage ditch.
Is that wide? Is that wide, 26 feet wide?
26 feet wide on the plat.
Okay.
Between fence line to fence line. We came up with, I came up with a 24-foot wide channel section at 12-foot bottom, one-to-one slopes, and say the, the water depth here would be five feet, but my height of the, the depth of my total channel would be six feet, to give me one foot freeboard. And ran through that, and that kind of a section would flow 1,403 CFS, which is, you know, 10% more than my 100-year storm, so for planning purposes, I said, this is good, good to go. And what we did on that then was estimate a combination of the two, the combination of, of the triple cell box under the streets I mentioned before, and that came up to 520 lineal feet, and then I would be 990 lineal feet of open section. Those two add up to the 1,510 feet.
You talking about on the ditch, you talking about concrete sides and, and the bottom?
Yeah. 12-foot bottom, come up one-to-one, to where the width at the top would be 24-foot wide concrete section. That would carry the 1,400 CFS, and what I'm looking for is something to carry 1,310, but that's, that's good for planning. Anyway, then we came up, we estimated the reinforced box under this scenario, and did the same thing, cubic yards times the total lineal feet, times the 518 per cubic, for running foot for the cost, it came up to 875,000. The steel reinforcement comes up to 147,000. And then the open channel section cost, estimated that to be 3,690 square yards of concrete channel, and we're estimating that to cost $145 a square yard, at the cost of 535,000. Total there is 1.5 billion, then with the contingency, 25%, another 380,000, so the total of this combination is only 1.9 billion. So, it's a lot lower than the otherwise, so if we're doing it, this would be the...
And this, this isn't going to create a downstream problem? Is it, are you just moving your problems, or?
It, it gets it to the open channel.
It gets it to the...
At Millstead Park, yeah, and it's just a hop, skip to the river.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's not going to, not going to flow through any more neighborhoods.
Couldn't rock that instead of concrete, if you don't, if it would stand up or last or what?
Well, we could, but then the, the concrete section allows it to be narrower. I mean, you can, if you start doing some rock channels, and you've got more retardance and the friction factor is higher, and you need more width, and then you're buying, buying yards of people's properties back in there.
Maintenance problem. There were more of a maintenance problem, probably.
An erosion maybe.
Oh, they're talking about throwing brush in the channel now, they're probably sure enough.
Now, the next few slides are just really the, the data from past bids that we used to do our estimating, just to let you know that we just didn't, you know, pull it completely out of the air. There's some good, there's a basis for the estimates, and it's just good enough for planning purposes, so if we want to... And then the last slide I had here was showing again the 100-year floodplain, and I took this off Zillow, just this afternoon, zillow.com, just to...
Take it off what?
Zillow.com, so, I mean, these aren't my numbers, I hope nobody, you know, gets upset or anything, but it gives you an idea of the values of the properties within the floodplain on Buck Drive. And that's, that's always, that's always a consideration to think about.
So, so we talked about the 100-year floodback. How, this happens once, twice, every few years?
It's a, it's a, the statistical thing, once every 100 years, it doesn't, it occur, it can occur twice in a few months.
Well, I know, that's why I'm asking, how, what's the history here? Is it, you know, because we heard from citizens of the day...
About two years ago, we had eight inches.
It's probably, I would say we've experienced a 100-year storm, probably five times since 2007.
Well, the rain was what, less than three inches the other day? I mean, recent?
Well, we had five inches over the weekend, you know, over in May.
Okay, so we had five inches in that, that caused...
And when you start talking about 100-year storm, it's hard to, exactly, because you could have...
Oh, I know, I was just trying to get the, is this the worst place in town from a flooding perspective, or is there other places that have problems as well on flooding?
There's other, there's other places.
Just a few other places.
But this one here is probably, well, let me put it perspective, I mean, it is in the floodplain, and Shawnee's been in the FEMA flood thing since 1980, and we did get the records from FEMA, because there is programs with FEMA to mitigate flood problems like this, but it's not, they don't have grants and programs to come in and build structures and channels to mitigate. What they do is mitigate is, they buy properties out and just relocate people, and they do it based on repetitive losses. If there's a history of repetitive loss, enough loss to justify doing that. Well, we got the FEMA spreadsheet for Shawnee, and there hasn't been one claim for damages to FEMA from this area. So, that tells me that maybe the, and I don't have firsthand knowledge, I don't have pictures, but the, the water may just be getting in the people's drive, drives or garage areas, but not really up into the structure, the main floor of the structure.
And like, there was someone spoke last week, I believe, and stated that it was all in the kitchen.
I was just going to say, it, and it could be getting, it could be getting up, I just don't know, and maybe the residences, it's maybe cheaper to fix sheetrock than to file a claim to maybe have your premiums go up. I don't, I don't really know. I just know that FEMA doesn't have any record of any claims in this area, so there would be no help coming from FEMA to mitigate this problem, because they don't even see it.
Let me ask a quick question of you, John. Can you buy, and maybe somebody else can enlighten me, if you go to finance a house, and it's in the floodplain, do they have to tell you the financing agency, or?
I think if, if you borrow money through a federally insured institution, you're required to buy flood insurance.
Okay, okay, I'm just asking.
You may ask federal law.
So, as I count these little dots on here, we're looking at like 22 homes.
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Am I looking wrong?
Are you, are you looking at the aerial photo?
I just looked at, yeah, that aerial photograph that you had those dots on it. On page 13 in here.
The Zillow, the Zillow guy.
No, the Zillow, the last, right near, the last, last one.
Oh, okay, the last one.
Sorry. Just keep going, keep going, keep going, right there. And I may have counted the dots wrong, just, you know, looking...
Yeah, there's probably, yeah, there's...
20 to 25 homes in that area?
There's about 13, 14 houses right in this area.
Oh, no, wait a minute, if I counted every dot...
But in, inside, he's talking about inside the floodplain.
Okay.
Inside the floodplain. I'm sorry. It's just within this boundary in here.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah. I was counting all the dots.
And that's about the extent of the pictures, to show how far the water does get back, you know, it does get all the way down here to Main Street, and it does get back up again.
But actually, just backs it up till you get the opportunity to get rid of it.
Now, we can, funding-wise, I mean, the way it sits now, I mean, our 302 street fund pays for drainage improvements and street improvements, I mean, we could, it'd be a big hit to try to take this out of the 302 street fund, sure, to do it.
Just for example, the street fund gets two and a half million bucks a year on average, so even John's least estimate is 1.9, which would pretty much eat up one year's budget for road and stream maintenance. I would like to point out a couple of other things. John's planning for 100-year stream flow. We have 500-year flows, this won't accommodate that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, there'd still potentially be some flooding out there if we, if we spent 1.9 million dollars on it and got it fixed for the majority of the storms that we have. The other thing that I'll, that I'll talk about that may not be very popular, you know, we really need to consider a cost center for, for these. Oklahoma City, Tulsa, and even some of the smaller cities have something called Stormwater Utility. We are constantly battling the wet weather streams in our city and trying to keep them clean of debris and trash and things like that, and Stormwater Utility is a, is a small fee that could potentially be put on people's water bills in order to hire the staff and have the crews and the equipment and do projects like this, because this is the only one. Pool Place is another issue, Severn Street, John, name a couple of the others that are, that are major issues with us in terms of floodplain.
Well...
OBU and the hospital.
Yeah, over there, the, north of the plain fields of OBU, there on Penny, back in there gets it. And I should have brought an overall floodplain map of the Shawnee, because Shawnee is kind of fortunate that we're kind of on a ridge at the Upland hillside of the North Canadians, so we don't have major, major flooding, we're, I mean, wiping people's houses out, where we got to evacuate tons of people and stuff like that. We used to on the Canadian River, there in Santa Fe and Ohio, but that's slowly been mitigated, I guess, with people moving out. But as far as the cost center, the storm thing would be like to, let me just give a quick view of, we would, we'd have to do something with like a stormwater fee and identify, say, every residence in town, identify that as one unit, and set maybe like 2,000 or 3,000 square feet of impervious area, and identify that as one unit, and just charge every resident...
And that's what's on Oklahoma City's water bill, that's how they've done it, I got a copy of their water bill.
They'll do like every resident would maybe fill 50 cents or $1, and that's considered one equivalent unit. But then when we do the commercial shopping centers and areas like that, and it's, it's how much square feet of impervious parking lot divided by that 3,500 square feet unit that we've identified, and the commercial area may, their, their monthly fee may be, you know, $100 a month, or $200 a month, or $75 a month. So, that's where the, that's where the fund will grow, and then allow us to put on additional personnel to clean the channels and buy equipment to, just have an ongoing channel maintenance and stormwater conveyance system improvement projects like we do the streets.
John, a quick question, and I heard Mary Ann make a comment, but I see as we're approving new building structures, it seems like we're asking to put holding ponds and to kind of do a better job, or retention ponds, better than what was done back...
Oh, yeah.
When all this was done, because, you know, I go out by that Primrose Place, and even the water coming off of their, their building has a retention pond, you know, and, and so this happened many years ago, and we've kind of corrected the problem and all new in construction, right?
It's a, it's a problem that the city's kind of inherited, that we haven't done anything to cause it.
Right. And this was done a long time ago, if I understand, and they didn't do planning very well.
Well, you know planners.
Well...
Do what?
We said you know planners. Well, we're blessed now to be aware of it, and I think...
You're talking about 34 and around.
Well, John, I, I've got to say, this is most informative for, great recording, and I know you've put a lot of hours on this. We've now, when we start our planning and things, we're going to have to sit down, all of us as commissioners, and try to figure out, you know, how we're going to fix problems like this, and it's a major issue, and thank you so much for giving us this detailed report.
I do have one question, I know you wanted to get on.
Very good.
But the lady that came to us two weeks ago, and I understand she launched this on a six-year-old boy that...
I don't know who she was.
Otherwise, what I'm concerned about when we're talking about three 6-foot pipes, that's got to be somehow protected to where kids, and I was a six-year-old, so I know about the kids are going to be, so, are they going to be protected to where they won't be able to get into these things and float down this pipe? That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, there's not very many in town that are protected childproof like that, what you're saying, I mean, no, no.
Well, I mean, that would be something I would concern about.
We could, we could, we could identify the drainage channel, put up fencing around the channel and stuff like that.
I mean, there's, I mean, if they're going to climb, the fence are going to...
That's what I mean, that's, you wouldn't be able to protect it 100%.
But, I mean, there would be some kind of fence.
Well, actually, it got entered because it's out of a park, didn't it?
I'm not sure exactly where, I think we, I think we found him down there.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, that's right. So, once you get into those underground channels, it's pretty hard to expect anything else if you get swept into those.
I like the open channel, Sperry.
Well, the, the thing I just presented, showing the, the combination, the open channel with just the structure underneath the streets is the, would be the least costly approach.
Maybe the safest.
Yeah.
Well, thank you again, John, that was very, very informative, I certainly appreciate it, and I'm sure the other commissioners do too. Okay, we'll move on then to item number nine, presentation update on Visit Shawnee Inc. by Kinley Ferris. Ms. Kinley, would you come forward? Do you have to bring that ugly old guy with you there?
No, no, no. Good evening. I am Kinley Ferris, and I'm here on behalf of, as Executive Director for the Shawnee Convention of Visitors Bureau, and we have a Visit Shawnee Inc. update for you. You have a couple of documents in front of you that we laid down earlier... You have a couple of documents in front of you that we laid down earlier. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the elected chairman, Randy Gilbert, and let him give you the rest of the update.
Thank you, Kinley. Very exciting time for tourism in Shawnee. As you are probably aware of, the group met a couple of weeks ago. Visit Shawnee, Inc. kind of had their organizational meeting. I was very honored to be elected chairman for that group. We brought before you tonight the minutes from that first meeting. We're very excited to be moving forward. We've sent out a second meeting. We had two, two of our members, for personal reasons, had to resign off of the group before they were able to start. So you approved tonight in the consent agenda those two new appointees, along with, with Ash for the Chamber president being ex-official member for that group as well. So, so with your blessing, we feel like we're up and running. We're very excited. We hired an attorney the last group, at the last meeting. The Budget and Finance Committee was put into place. The Board Governance and Board Development Meeting, uh, group was put into place. They are working on the bylaws. They're working on the 501(c)(6) status for us. The Budget and Finance Committee's gonna have their initial meeting, I think, Kinley, in the next week or ten days. So, so we've got all kind of balls rolling, and we're very excited to be off to a great start. One of the things the Budget Committee asked was, what do they have to work with? Whenever we hired an attorney, kind of funny part of the attorney said, "We wanna hire you to do a really good job for us, but we don't have any money to pay you yet, but one day we may pay you." So, but, uh, it was explained to us during our first meeting that, that the, our, to that group, that the budget they'll have to work with will be the five percent hotel motel tax collected through the city. There's one percent retained by the city for administrative services, and then the other ninety-nine percent is passed on to that group to, to support tourism in the greater Shawnee area. So, uh, we're very excited. We're thrilled. Thank you for the opportunity for us to do that. We look forward to having a contract brought, I believe, before the city in the next couple of months for us to be approved, where we can, where we can start collecting money and we can be in the tourism business. So, thank you, thank you for this opportunity.
Now, let me just clear up for the other commissioners. Tourism business is still going on. It's under the other, it is still going on, so that we all understand. It's just that hasn't, everything hasn't transferred over to that new entity.
Tourism is alive and well, I think, Kinley.
Kinley's working hard at it and doing all that, so I think that, it's not like we're stopped until all this happens. Things are still moving along at a pace until this is all...
Very good point, Mary. We, we are, the current CBB is still operating. They have events, they have proposals out, I believe, and, and they have events that are coming to town. So, yes, we, yes, tourism is still very, very much, much, much alive in Shawnee.
Who is your attorney, just out of curiosity? Who is your attorney that you hired?
Matt Griffith.
Matt Griffith, oh, gosh, I don't know him. And are you still going to reside temporarily in, with the chamber there at that location?
Yes, we will, um, we haven't really crossed that bridge, but yes, they, uh, they've been very hospital, and, and we've met in their conference room, so, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
What's the occupancy at the hotels these days?
At, at the last meeting, Kelly Chandler was there, and he, you know, he, I mean, he's very knowledgeable. He laid out a lot of numbers that, that were beyond, beyond some of our group, including me, about the daily rate and the monthly rate and the annual rate. So, so, but yes, kind of the short answer, that's about sixty-five percent, which is...
Is that what it's been the last...
It's been from sixty-four to sixty-eight, I believe, the last couple, three years.
Now, we have experienced a drop because of the pipeline.
Yes.
And, you know, it's affected our income too at the expo, to explain, because, you know, if you remember going by the expo, the RVs were just thick out there from that big pipeline and all those people coming through. So, I think that we were above normal during those times. Now, I think we're getting back to a realistic number.
Of course, the rodeo is a hundred percent.
We also have a big new hotel on I-40.
Do what?
We have a huge new hotel on I-40.
They, Kelly was very pleased with the numbers, you know, for my business. I like for the number to be higher, John. I'm sure you're, you know, I mean, your business, you want it to be higher, but sixty-four percent, they say, for the hotel motel is, is very exceptional, so.
Other questions, son? Thank you very much for that report.
Thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number ten. Is discussion consideration of possible action on an ordinance for adoption of revised drought management plan. Mr. Nels?
Mr. Mayor, City Commission, what I placed before you on your docket is, uh, we have recently found out that the, the current lake levels on the intake towers are painted using the NGVD datum from nineteen-twenty-nine, and we'd like to revise that and start using the NAVD nineteen-eighty-eight elevations to be consistent with USGS. They have a analytical measuring device out there that measures our elevation in our water of our lakes, and before, when you would compare that with the painted markings on the towers, and then you would go online and look at their markings, there was always seemed to be a two-foot discrepancy, and that was never really understood. We've got that straight, and we would like to use the nineteen-eighty-eight datum and be in aligned with the USGS.
You're gonna have to repaint the numbers, though, if you say?
What we're, what we're planning on doing is just erase them.
You're gonna do what now?
Just erase them.
Just erase them. There won't be any numbers on the tower.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I can't drive down the dam and see how high the water is.
Thank goodness.
Can you just put the website on there for them?
Yeah.
We can see it going over the spillway. We know we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, who knows when it's going over the spillway? The only disadvantage will be is quarterly, I always take a picture of the tower, so I know exactly, historically, what the level is.
At some point, we can paint numbers back on there. We can only just paint down to the water level at this time. So what we're planning on doing is, is increasing our trigger numbers in our drought management plan by two feet to be consistent with, with these numbers.
You know, I don't have any...
Increasing.
I don't have any opposition to changing those numbers, 'cause I mean, if that's the datum you're gonna use, you're gonna have to change the drought management plan to coordinate with that. But at some point, I hope somebody will go back and take a look at what the lake level is when we actually began to implement mandatory rationing, 'cause I think ten-fifty-eight using the old measurement is too low.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna increase those by two feet.
Well, I know, but it's still, still the same lake level.
It's still the same.
Because the old measurement, the new measurement at ten-sixty would be the same as the old measurement at ten-fifty-eight. And you were here in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, when it got down that low, and they had to open the Atoka line to bring water in. My concern is if we wait until the lake level drops that before we start implementing mandatory rationing, it's almost too late. So I'm just hoping somebody will go back and take another look at that.
Sure.
Boy, can we count on that being done?
Yes.
Well, I mean, but you can calculate all that out about what our, what our normal water usage is at the lake level, what you can draw down, everything, right? That has, I know that's been done.
Right, and the, the current drought management numbers were derived from the yield study.
Right.
So it was their recommendations, and we can, we can change that at any...
Yeah, I, I just remember what the reality was, though, back in two thousand and seven.
Pretty dry.
And if you don't start rationing until then, and we had been rationing for several months at that point, maybe even a couple of years, I'm not sure. But it was, it was bad.
I agree.
Commissioners, I wasn't here back then, but Commissioner AJ at the time, we were not able to use, if you'll remember, we were not able to use West Watkins.
That's not true.
We were not using it, to my understanding.
I have an email from Asana Jabar back then that said that they were, they were blending the water forty-sixty from West Watkins. So they were using some, not, they couldn't do it a hundred percent. But, but they were blending it, and, you know, if, if the twin lakes is down to ten-fifty-eight, then we know West Watson is gonna be low also. And I know there, if it drops down to ten-sixty-two, you know, we go below the recreational pool, but in an emergency, you can pull it thin. All I'm saying is, I think, and I know they were engineers with CDM, you know, the company that came in and did that, but I, I just remember the reality of what it was when they opened the Atoka line, and supposedly, they wouldn't open the Atoka line unless there was an emergency. And for several days after they opened the Atoka line, the lake did not come up. And fortunately, it started raining.
I think it had to travel about two miles in a dry creek bed before it actually got to the lake.
Right, right. So anyhow, I'm just saying, I would hope that...
Do you expect us to be able to come back? Y'all come back to us with a recommendation on that?
We definitely need to do that. But what I want the commission to understand is that the, the policy decisions that were made to turn that water line on back in two thousand and seven were not based on data. We didn't have it.
Yeah.
All we do now is just estimate it. We can't, we can't look at every possibility of, of water source. Commissioner AJ, you're right. I wasn't here. I didn't, I wasn't here when the, the lake, where trees growing in the middle of it or any of that, but we have to, we have to base it on data. I don't wanna base it on, well, there's this much shoreline. We base it on data, which is, you know, the best method that we have at the time for doing it. If we need to turn it on, I'd like to be able to say that, citizens, we need to turn it on because we studied the amount of acre feet that are in the lake and how much time we think that we'll have on it, as opposed to just turning it on because it's not...
Right, and I'm not addressing the Atoka line. I, I was just talking about the point at which we mandate rationing. That's all.
I think I'm here, that we don't work until it's so critical, is what I'm hearing.
And that's a policy decision, and, and what I hear the commission saying is, you guys wanna take a look at that, and you want, and we'll be glad to do that.
Okay.
Well, it gets to a point that when that water level gets down so low that you have problems getting water to, to the plant, because it didn't have enough pressure, or it didn't have the volume behind it to push it to the plant. So, Lynn, I've talked about this before, that's a ten-fifty-eight or ten-sixty water it happened to be, that's pretty low, and you don't have that much leverage between top flowing and when you start the emergency restriction, that should be earlier than ten-sixty.
Well, the lowest reading I think I have is a little below ten-fifty-nine, ten-fifty-eight, somewhere. I'm not sure about UST.
They've got some old pictures in there.
It's pretty close to that, and the top valve was totally out of the water, and the second valve was starting to show, yeah, so that's pretty low before you begin rationing, I think. Okay, that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any other questions for you? Okay, if not, Chair, I'll entertain a motion in this matter.
So, please.
A motion by Vice Mayor Harris, a second by Commissioner Hall. Could we read the title, please, ma'am?
This is an ordinance relating to a drought management plan for the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, repeating and amending sections twenty-six dash sixty-seven and twenty-six sixty-seven point one of the Shawnee Municipal Code setting forth voluntary and mandatory restrictions for water use in case of water shortages, providing for penalties, providing for repealer, providing for codification, providing for separability, and declaring an emergency.
Motion carries.
Remark that off in the inches of stuff down there.
Discussion consideration, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You want us to do the emergency? Okay, we'll entertain a motion. Have a motion by...
Second.
Second.
It was a second, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, did it carry? I didn't see it. Yeah, motion carries, okay. Okay, item number eleven. Discussion consideration of possible action concerning use of city facilities as a public tornado shelters. Mr. Lynch?
Leading the mayor, Commissioner's Don Lynch, Emergency Management Director. I've come before you this evening to discuss with you and ask you to consider terminating the use of City Hall and Fire Station Number Three as public tornado shelters. We came before you on April second, twenty-twelve. At that time, the commission had a discussion concerning the, the use of the facilities. The direction that we received was to keep the facilities open at that time, but look for alternative substitute locations. Bringing you up to date on what has transpired since that date, we have signed an agreement, this commission signed an agreement with the North Rock Creek School to use the safe rooms at their middle school as public shelters when school is not in session. We have diligently tried to find a substitute facility near downtown to no avail. I've looked at, at two different church locations that had offered as possible locations. They do not meet the FEMA standards for the community shelters. They could be brought up to date at some point in time, but currently do not have the hazard mitigation plan in place to look at going for additional funding if this commission wanted to, to help support that update. We do have that plan at FEMA Region Six, so it is possible, it's being reviewed at this time. So it is possible that some point in the future, there would be the opportunity to apply for hazard mitigation funds to do those kinds of things, if we wanted to. But right now, they just simply don't meet those standards. I asked a downtown merchant to intercede on our behalf for a couple of facilities that we knew downtown had basements in them. Those attempts were unsuccessful to ask them to, to use their shelters in that location. We have had, since the storms of last year, an update in the number of shelters that have been constructed, private individual shelters. I put a map in front of your position this evening to take a look at the, the shelters that have been registered with us in the Emergency Management Office, and we have increased our numbers significantly during the last year. We've gone from approximately three hundred and seventy to a thousand, five hundred, close, somewhere in that neighborhood across the county. This map is broken out by fire district, as you see there. So there's probably between six hundred and seven hundred and fifty shelters that have been registered in the Shawnee area, inside Shawnee, Fire District, Shawnee city limits, as individual shelters that are available for individuals and families to use. And hopefully, there are some good neighbors out there that are working in their neighborhoods to, to open that up to their neighbors as well. This is up significantly, and, and the Community Development Department tells us that the permits for new storm shelter construction continue to go up as people realize after last year the need to have individual storm shelters available. We have also the grant program through the Red Cross funding that will make additional shelters available, and it is part of our hazard mitigation plan as well. Any future funding that might become available, that's one of the items that we have identified as wanting to continue to make funds available. We would continue to, to search for opportunities for funding for individual family safe rooms as it goes on. The major tornadoes last year taught us a couple of things and reinforced some lessons that are, are being looked at, and the different message from two years ago versus today, previously from some storms that occurred, the message that came out was, "If you're not underground, you're going to perish," and that's simply not true. There have been several studies in, in the Moore area and other places. We saw it here, as a matter of fact, F-four, F-five tornadoes that went through the area. Families survived. There was one family immediately west of the Moore Medical Center in Moore, the F-five, right smack dab in the middle of the F-five tornado damage area. The family did not have an underground cellar or storm safe room, meeting the FEMA guidelines. So what they did was follow the guidelines that have been talked about for years. Get in the smallest room, lowest floor, center part of the house, get as many walls and roofs between them and the outside as possible. Family did that. Two children got in the bathtub. Mom and dad huddled around that tub. They, they put on blankets and helmets and did shielding as much as they could, and they survived that storm. We have pictures of houses in the area that was affected in Shawnee and Bethel Lakers and Potawatomi County last year, of houses where if you had taken shelter in the center portion of a substantially constructed building, you would have survived that tornado. So it, it does bear out that substantially constructed buildings do provide shelter from those tornadoes that occur. Additional changes from last year, well, let me back up for a second. One of the things that, that we did also was, was pointed out last year, two places that you don't wanna be during a tornado are in a car and outside. And when you have public shelters, unfortunately, many people wait till the very last minute when the warning is issued to get in their car and drive to a shelter, and those are not good places to be, and so potentially placing people in harm's way when, when that occurs. Another thing that has changed since last year, other cities in central Oklahoma, including Norman, Midwest City, Edmund, have closed their public shelters because they realize that this is a problem for people to be outside traveling to a shelter when they should already be in a safe place, a substantially constructed room or a safe room or an underground cellar when that warning takes place. The only, the only community that we can find in central Oklahoma that still has public tornado shelters other than Shawnee is Newcastle. And they have a, a public shelter facility constructed for that purpose was constructed several years ago from that. So, uh... So again, one tenth of 1% of all the tornadoes that occur in this country in a year are EF5. Most of them are less than EF5. The last three EF5s unfortunately that have occurred have been in Oklahoma. So we do get those occasionally. But if you are in, and the message is very clear from, from the media and from the National Weather Service partners, that if you can take shelter inside in a substantially constructed building, your chances of survival are greatly improved. And so we want to make sure that, that, that we continue to look for avenues to assist our people with providing additional shelters. But we also don't want to put them in harm's way by opening a public shelter, letting them come down here in the middle of that storm. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
What are some of the problems that you've run into when you've opened the shelters here at City Hall and at the fire station?
We had, the basement of City Hall is both our Emergency Operations Center and our 911 Center. And we had five times the amount of people that we could hold show up last year during the storms. And so it becomes an issue of where do you put those people? We can't put them in the EOC or in the secured police locations because of interfering with the operations that are taking place there. So we put them in every place that we possibly could. And then Chief France came up and opened up this facility and we put them in here. And, and so you have to deal with the overflow. There are behavioral issues with some of the people that take advantage of that. And we have found people that don't behave as we would have expected them to in a public facility. They bring food, they leave trash. We found both urine and feces in one facility following the event at Fire Station Number Three last year. On the May 31 storm, our shelter monitor that was there told us one in about every six to eight people brought their pets with them, dogs, cats, even a parrot. The parents, the pets were not corralled. And that sometimes became a problem. They had to take people out in areas, separate them out, and tell them to control their pet. So we do have issues with, with behavior and damage to facilities of unfortunately, when, from those issues from those storms last year as well.
Well, I had to come down here a couple of times, you know, and I hope I don't have to come down here again as long as I'm there or anytime. But I will tell you, if you've been down here when that and have seen what's going on in letting them come in here, you would definitely know that we need to close it. And that's just having experienced. Now, Commissioner Smith, I think you've experienced it too, haven't you? So anyway.
And again, as I say, we want to try to, to find alternate avenues when we can. We'll continue to work for that. We're not going to stop doing that. But I think it's important now, as we take this step, if you, if you do this tonight, was we'll give time for people to find alternate plans before storm season next year. We'll give us time to get the word out that people need to find alternate locations for that. And we'll also, we'll continue to work towards trying to help people get the shelters that they need affordable where they can, can take shelter at home and protect themselves and their families from it. But this is a, this is a critical facility, and so is Fire Station Number Three in terms of operations. It is just a security hazard, unfortunately, for to have this kind of behavior with this, with these many folks going on, so.
Don, on the city channel, are you educating them what to do?
Yes, yes. We do, we do have a set of standard slides that we run. And Mr. Shawnee's been good in the past. We've done some City Connect series that talk about how to do that. And we'll certainly be running those again as we get into storm season to let folks know.
Educating them and educating over and over is good.
We have to continue to get that word out, to keep reinforcing it. Commissioner, you're correct.
Any other questions?
Justin, has there been any thought of making the code like putting in hurricane clips and, and I forgot what to call the heat clips, they put in between the walls and the...
Tie downs of hurricane clips, the hurricane straps.
Is that what Moore's done? Didn't Moore increase their codes?
Just changed their code to require the hurricane clips in the destruction.
It's a good idea.
We've got them on our house, but maybe what's saved it. We've got them on our house, but maybe what's saved it.
So let me ask you this. You're saying we don't have that code now?
No, we've adopted a statewide code. And what Moore has done is it's also adopted a statewide code, but then adopted some additional standards for more...
High wind protection.
Is that something we ought to look into, in your opinion?
I think it is something we can look into. I've followed some of the information that Moore provided and I think in most cases it adds, it adds several thousand dollars to the cost of a home. So if we make it mandatory and it applies to all new construction, then it hits everyone equally. The information I have shows that, you know, it would not do much for, for your severe, your extreme severe weather events, but, but probably does more to limit, ensure blocks than it does to necessarily protect life.
I don't really think it's that expensive.
Reinforcing garage doors too helps because you've got, in some places, very fancy garage doors that are the first thing to break and then the wind gets in and the renewals principle takes over and the house begins to act like it's exploding.
Mr. Lynch, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, what would you like to do?
I think that in my four years here, you know, I was, I was educated because we, I've been here all my life, and you had to go to a shelter, some kind of a shelter, and the city did provide that. But under the circumstances, we probably ought to do what the state recommended, not have them at our center. This is where we've got to do a lot of our safety work. And it really does, it really does make a lot of sense. You get in your car, that's not as smart a place to be.
Would you like to turn that into a motion?
Yes, I'd make that motion.
Okay.
As I was kind of preaching, unfortunately, we can't do that. I'd make that motion that we accept the state's recommendation to shut down all the public centers.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Wintereger. Okay, let's vote.
I would like to say that like the schools and the city halls, the city buildings, the fire departments, so forth, actually, you know, belong to the citizens. So I'd hate to see them closed down. I know there's going to, there's problems, and there're going to be problems. And I can see that it's a bigger problem here at City Hall than it would be at the fire station. But those still are, you know, public facilities and should, should be used as public facilities. And I've never been here, and I've never been at the fire station. I have my own shelter at home, but, you know. I've always been of the opinion that the schools that think like that ought to be open for the use of the public in this as well as occasion.
Schools are not open though for the public.
I know, but if I had anything to do with it, it would be.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It's time to vote, ladies and gentlemen. One, two, three, four, five. Motion carries. Item number 12. Sales tax report.
Unfortunately, I don't have the greatest news. Sales tax this month is down $34,000. We received $1,432,000. And I looked at the last top five, you know, the top five revenues, and it's all over the place from last August, this August, and I haven't looked back at last month. So I really can't figure out if there's a trend on something that's going down. I mean, but like, like this month, retail department stores were $21,000 less than last year at the same time.
Wow.
But then you go to the retail trade, which is building materials and supermarket, that one's up 35,000. So it's all over the place, but unfortunately, we were down 34,000, and we'll just have to see what happens next month. But overall, for the year, we're still up in two months. We've had a couple of really strong months, and this one's just a little bit...
Are we sure that everyone, I mean, all the big stores and everything got their taxes in on time? Or have we checked to make sure there's no shortage or something for our shortage?
I looked at some of the big boxes, and they're pretty much the same, yeah.
So Oklahoma City was up like 15%.
Well, the state's up.
Yeah, but I also made a comment in that article that watch out for next month. They were expecting a big drop, and I don't know what that meant, but...
Well, because you got the tax back to school, no tax back to school deal. That's kind of what it wasn't reported.
So they'll have to pay us back on that, Brian, the state's...
Yeah, we do. We get that money back. We get the check usually in October.
Well, we'll look forward to next month. You coming back with a brighter report, okay?
I'll try.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I always like to brag on our staff. This is an award from the Government Finance Officers Association for our CAFER. And this is our first year. You see the little button in the corner. I'm really proud of the finance department staff. We didn't quite make the grade last year. Governmental finance is different than most people are used to seeing. We're, we're a zero-sum game. Whatever we take in, we're supposed to, we're supposed to spend, with the exception of whatever we can put into fund balance. And that's hard for somebody who's from a profit and cost-centered type of place to understand. This helps our citizens. This proves that we're trying to help our citizens understand our finances. And so there's lots of empty little button places on here. And Cindy and the rest of the finance staff, keep up the good work. We want to see more of these.
We received it years ago. The last one we received was 2006.
2006? Well, congratulations. Thank you.
Very good.
Moving right along, I attended the county commission meeting today. They did two things on their agenda that I thought the commission needed to know about. They approved sending the 911 fees from 10% to 15% for the unincorporated Potawatomi County areas. As I understand it, McLeod, Asher, all the other cities except for ours. So on the ballot in November with the ballot language that they approved today, they'll be asking for a 5% increase on the baseline for the landline phones only. That's the only thing that we as voters in our county and our city have control over because we're, we've been trying to work on the state legislature to do something with cell phones, but that hasn't been real successful up to date. So the only thing I would say about that again is we've, I've had all these discussions with commissioners, landline phones are going away. People aren't using them. So from our perspective, we've talked with the county about raising our rates, but it's a diminishing revenue stream. So going to the voters and asking for that approval is probably, you know, potentially could be good for us in the short term, but it couldn't be in the long term something we could depend on. Also, they approved, this city commission and SEDF approved resolutions regarding Sunday sales going to the voters in November. The county commission has also approved that today. Melissa Dennis was not there, but I know she was in favor of it. So it will also go to the voters in November for Sunday sales. Number four, we haven't signed any contracts or anything with anybody with branding. I don't know if Kinley's still here or not. She is still here tomorrow. She and I, the, our branding that the city commission approved was $35,000, and that didn't cover everything that, that we needed to do with some of the proposals that I got before the budget actually began. So Kinley and I are going to meet with, there's three parts to it. There's a survey of residents, there's a survey of non-residents, and then there's the, the task of taking all of that data and putting it together and creating a brand of ourselves. And I'd like to think that we would have a brand with all of the agencies that we're partners with, whether it's Boys and Girls Club, or it's VSI, the new VSI, or the Chamber. So I've kind of asked Kinley to attend a meeting with me in Oklahoma City tomorrow where we talk about the outside surveying. We want to find out what people from outside Shawnee think of Shawnee from a tourism standpoint and then, and of a branding standpoint. And then we needed to survey our residents inside. So hopefully, this partnership will work out real well between VSI and, and, and the city. I know they don't have any money yet, but, you know, we're trying to get projects in the hopper so that we can work together on them. And I just thought I'd let the commission know that. I'll bring more information to you soon. New commissioner orientation. I stole this off Dana's desk tonight, but this is something that we've not done. Panka City had a really good model. And basically, this talks about role of the city commission, meeting procedures, Open Meeting Act, ordinances, city commission forms, governing recommendations, rules of conduct, rules, ideas for better meetings, things like that. Just sort of the rules, the framework by which we live by. And Kerry's trying to get the new commissioners together so that we can actually sit down and talk with them about these. And I'll have sort of like a roadmap that helps them understand. And for those of you that I didn't do that with in the past, I apologize, but it's...
Thanks a lot.
It was trial by fire, but this is, this is, you know, we, we evolve and we're getting better, and we're making sure that we hopefully get, get commissioners off on a better foot. So let's see. Streetscape design, I didn't want to really touch on it too very much. I know that we're still waiting on, on actually getting word from ODOT that we've been awarded that grant, but we're in the process of engineering it. We are meeting with the Downtown Merchants Association Thursday, is it Thursday this week, Lynn? It's, it's a following week, okay? The 28th. We want to get their input. And there's been some discussion about landscaping and bump outs and things like that. They're the ones that are the merchants that are affected by it. So we're going to go sit down with them. I will tell you that our discussion among staff is then, we really, really want to make sure that we talk very seriously about these things. Once the concrete is dry, it's hard to make changes to it. But at the same time, if any of the commissioners are interested in being there, let me know. I can make sure that we get it advertised as a regular meeting if you guys want to hear from, from some of those folks. If not, then, then I think, I know Commissioner AG's planning to be there, and Wes is planning to be there. And if there were just three, then it wouldn't be an issue. So we want to get some input from, I know it's James's ward, so he may want to be there as well. We are beginning discussion about pool operations. We have talked amongst, I've talked with each of you guys individually about this from time to time. Wes and I and James Bryce met earlier this week to talk a little bit about, you know, as Wes, the representative from the commission and us as representative of staff, what are we going to do with this thing? We've kind of come of the opinion that we need to have an operations person that may morph into, into a recreation person. That's somebody that's responsible for that facility, opening it up, closing it up, staffing it, making sure all the maintenance gets done with it, make sure all the lifeguards are there. And then contracting with the YMCA to provide us with a steady flow of lifeguards. We're not in the lifeguard business, but we need experts that do that. So we want, and we want to do this pretty soon. I hate the fact that our sales tax numbers are down, but, you know, in order to get, in order to get this pool up and running and this individual, A, know what the facility looks like and how it operates and what, you know, what all the inner workings of it are. We need to get this individual hired pretty soon here, probably shooting for January, so that they can get in there and begin to operate that facility and learn about it. And then we'll be up and running when we open up in May. We can have those discussions. I have to put that position on the commission's agenda at some point for approval and show you where I'm going to find the money to do it with. But I wanted to give you a heads up that that's kind of the direction we're going. If the commission has, you know, individual thoughts about that, you can share them now or share them with me via email or telephone. I'd be glad to take that information. Lastly, just a couple of dates. I'll be out of town for the International City Management Association September 13 through 18. No sense in writing these down. I'll, I'll let you guys know about them. Also, for, for commissioners that are staying on, the OML meeting is in Oklahoma City, the 23rd through the 25th. Any one of us would be happy to carpool with you. It's a really good experience to go if you can make the time to do it. And I'm going to be going to, since the International Economic Development Council is in Fort Worth in October, I'm going to go for a couple of days to that, the 19th through the 22nd, just because it's close by. So if there's any questions, I'd like to, I'd be glad to answer any of them. Thank you.
Okay, any new business?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then we're going to recess to the Shawnee Airport Authority. We do have a forum. I'll consider approval of consent agenda. Chair, entertain a motion in that matter.
I'd like some explanation on this item B.
Okay.
That is, that is our lease renewal with Enterprise rental car. Out that way, they've got offices out there.
Yeah, well, we get, I mean, if some kind of note to that condition, then we could, I mean, for me, I could have understood it. But the way it's written there, I assume it's leasing to somebody else.
Oh, PA and Holdings, yeah, that's my fault. Because that's Enterprise rental car. Their initial term was for three years. It's been three years, and they have the right to renew for additional period, so it's all right.
Okay. Don't leave because you're on the agenda a little bit farther. So any other questions on the consent agenda?
Maybe we've adopted a consent agenda. Was it just renewed at the same rate and everything?
Same rate, yes, sir.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Hare that we approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a... hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Let's vote. Motion carries. Item number two, consider a lease agreement with AG Aviation Services for aircraft repair and service. Would you like to give us a report on that matter, sir?
Now, this actually is a new lease with AG Aviation Services between them and the airport. The owner of this service is Marcus Dunn. He's got some history at the airport already. He actually used to do some aircraft maintenance some years ago before he retired. He's been in business partners with Mark White over at Airfly, so he's had a good reputation out there. He's got a good personal and credit references. What he's wanting to do is actually lease a significant portion of our maintenance hangar out at the airport and actually work on crop dusting aircraft, annuals, inspections, minor repairs, and modifications. The lease is exclusively for him to work on crop dusting aircraft and nothing else. So, he's not going to be in conflict with our existing aircraft maintenance guys out there. They're not going to be stealing business away from each other. Pretty much, he's wanting to target the air tractor thrush and ag cat owners and operators in Oklahoma, in the bordering states. Right now, there is not really any crop dusting dealerships or service centers in Oklahoma. There's a few in Texas, some in Kansas, some in Arkansas. And so, he thinks he can actually, you know, tap into that market that's underrepresented in Oklahoma and do well at it. Initially, he's going to have three mechanics on duty, on staff. Looking to expand to five within the first six months. So, pretty much, he's going to be renting out the entire east side of our maintenance hangar, 5,700 square feet, standard lease, similar to what other businesses have at the airport. Also going to lease some office space in the terminal. It's for one term with an option for them to renew for an additional year for the next five years, same insurance requirements that we had with other businesses. And notably, it's going to be good for us, in my opinion. A lot of these crop dusters are going to have to be drained of fuel when they get worked on. So, on, when they depart, they're going to have to fill it back up. So, that's an increase in actually the jet fuel sales, even though they don't have jet engines on them. They take jet fuel. Airport staff recommends leasing with them. Airport Advisory Board recommended signing a lease with them on August 6. And they're going, they would yield about $12,000 in rent a year for us, and that's not mentioning the fuel that they purchase from.
Did you say 12,000?
12,000 a year.
Thousand a month?
A year. Yes, sir.
Thousand.
A thousand, yeah.
Okay. Cheryl, I see you're heading on. Are you making a motion?
I'm making the motion. I like it.
Okay. Commissioner Stevens is making the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Hall seconds. Let's vote on it. Motion carries. Any new business?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, if not, then I will adjourn to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. We do have a quorum. Cheryl, entertain a motion to consider approval of the consent agenda, which was a minutes from the previous meeting.
Motion approved.
A motion by Commissioner Hall and a second by Vice Mayor Harrod. Let's vote. Motion carries. Any new business?
No new business.
If not, then I'll adjourn this and move back to our regular agenda. And I'm going to take the power of the chair and make a statement here that I want, before we move into our executive session, because so many people sometimes bail out on. Three of you commissioners are leaving. While we may not have always agreed on every issue, it has been an honor for you to serve our community. And the hours that you've put in and the dedication that you've given to this city are, you are to be commended for. And we greatly appreciate your efforts and the best to you in the future. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you've done to help make Shawnee a better place for all. Thank you. Okay, we will, at this time...
Didn't commissioners come in, still come in? That's what I was saying on the September 2nd.
Yeah, we'll need to come back.
Yeah, they're coming back.
Go for the minutes and stuff.
Yeah, it won't be a lot of voting going on.
New commissioners are seated next time.
But again...
After the minutes are approved.
Right.
And that's on a Tuesday.
September the 2nd.
September 2nd. It's a Tuesday.
So, again, I just want the public to know and everybody, thank you, thank you, thank you for what you've done for us.
City manager's going to furnish ribeyes and...
Very good. It's in the venue.
Okay, we're back in business here. Item number 15 is consider an executive session to discuss municipal judges' performance evaluation in employment contract pursuit to 250S, discussing the employment, hiring, and appointment, demotion, discipling, or resignation of any individual salaried public officer or employee. Cheryl, entertain a motion in this matter.
So, I'll move.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrod. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Winteringer. Let's vote. Motion carries. If some of you are leaving, thank you for being here. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thanks. Item number 16, consider matters discussed in executive session regarding municipal judges' performance evaluation in employment contract pursuit to 250S, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, discipling, or resignation of any individual salaried public officer. The motion in this matter, then that means there is no action taken at executive session. I will adjourn. Your city commission being in the evening. Thank you.